City Council meeting. At this time, we will start a city council meeting at this time. Mr. Gureydi, if we went all lives, Mr. Gureydi will sit in the occasion and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gureydi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Lord, thank you for bringing us together. We ask you to give us hope, to give us wisdom, to bless this city and bless each one of us, bless our families. We ask you this in the name of whom we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gureydi. Mr. Hammond, please note that all members of city council are present with the exception of Dr. McGuire, and he is excused for this evening, along with Mr. Glaser present and our solicitor, Assistant Solicitor Mr. Camacho. We welcome all of you. Courtesy of the floor, if you're speaking as an individual, obviously you're speaking for yourself, you have three minutes. If you're speaking for a group or association, you have five minutes. Mr. Hersman, good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're filing a reconnoitre downtown Pennsylvania. I'm gonna start again with this financial plan. Couple of months ago, finance director said it's done, so I put another right to know request in, and I get a response, there isn't, there isn't any. I keep asking city council, looking where the financial plans, you know, there's a law. We're borders, border house, I want to read to the hall.
Did you read your agenda for tonight? Did you see R 147?
No.
Okay, go ahead, you finish, I don't want to be rude, go ahead.
And then what I'm saying is, we should have this financial plan, and we spent almost hundred grand for this thing, Mr. Chairman. And there it goes. Just follow along just like Vito Paulo. I know when Roger was in, and Darrell, pardon the hell, my dude gave me a ticket.
It had to be many years ago if he got a ticket from him.
So, and then, so, Mr. Chairman, is that about on your agenda tonight?
Uh, we, when we get the resolutions, R 147, we're gonna refer to budget of finance, but we have a resolution that is in, uh, is, is, is made up, is made already, and this requests the mayor to submit and turn over that five-year plan.
I think.
It's long overdue. Uh, I had a brief conversation, probably a month or two ago, with Mr. Hartzell. The five-year plan is in City Hall. It is in the mayor's hands, and he had told Mr. Hammond several times, many times, that he will be releasing it to city council shortly, and so with R 147, we gotta push his hand a little bit.
And the right to know request, I got a letter today, it says, there's none around it, so, so one hand, there's no doubt.
I understand.
But, you know what, that study could be where John said that, where, that study that John was looking for that.
What kind of?
Maybe it could be both again.
It, it could be buried on page fifty-seven, it could be, it could be.
And you know what, Mr. Chairman, we keep reading these letters to the editor on the parking problem, so, I think council should reconvene them, public meeting with the parking authority, see how we can get parking, and so if people don't come out and they spend, you know, maybe fifteen dollars for a glass of wine and might sit on it and.
Not for a glass of wine and twenty bucks for a parking ticket, that's a good deal, what's wrong with that?
A lot of deals in there. So, I think.
No, I, no.
I think, what, did this help the downtown merchants, are reading these letters to the editor?
I'm, I'm gonna turn that over to, I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Hendricks. Mr. Hendricks is our city council appointee to the parking authority. Miss Apes, I've been on the parking authority for many years, and, uh, yes, we are going to look into that.
Okay, so, thank you. Here's one more thing, so I got fourteen seconds. You know, when Julio and I were on council together, there was a study done about South Mountain, about the timber and keeping the deeries off the South Mountain, what happened to that study? Is that buried also? You know, we were gonna put a fence to keep the deer, it's valuable, lay a lane, right, Julio? The timber, we're gonna harvest the timber, make money.
That was, that must have been, um, back when, um, Mr., Mr. O'Connell was your teacher or something?
No, no, that wasn't.
You know, we paid a lot of money for this study.
We, we had, that study was, that, that study was done, and that, and that study was absolutely, presented to council, and it's, it's not that many years ago, but, and that, that study kinda went away because we were, they were thinking the city quote-unquote, "Maybe we're gonna sell the timber," right, to get some money or fence it in, yeah, no, it's not that long.
And you're right, they're gonna put a fence to keep the deer out.
Right.
Keep the deer out.
It's not that long ago.
So, is that, is that a dead, dead trait to that study?
I, I, I personally, I personally hope it's, I hope, I personally hope it's, it is gone.
So, the deer have placed their roam in?
Yeah, and the buffalo. Thank you, Mr. Hersman. Mr. Heffentraeger.
Welcome.
Name and address, please.
Hannah and Joy, seven thirty-three North Eleventh. I represent downtown Tennessee Association as well as the tenth ward north. Yeah, speaking of wasting money on, on, uh, studies, I find it interesting, nobody ever breaks, gets across, nobody ever brings up all the studies for Center City, that have wasted so much money on over all these years. Only the current one is actually being somewhat implemented, except for, of course, it leaves out a few sections, but anyway. Um, I wanted to know, actually, what's going on with seven twenty-six Gordon Street, that is the building at the corner of Gordon and Hall, that is currently about ready to collapse? That's what it looks like, you know, the wall's completely covered out, they closed down the whole street.
I want you to hold it one second. Who, who, okay, who's, we need somebody at the table for the administration, who's representing the administration this evening? Yeah. All right, thank you, Shannon. You, you're representing the administration this evening in, 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 uh, the mayor's absence.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Shannon, uh, you wanna finish your comment, or then, or you wanna, wanna piecemeal the questions?
Piecemeal.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Seven twenty-six Gordon, we're actively working with the bank to address the issue with the wall. So, we are, um, the bank is, uh, we, we received a structural engineer's report, the bank is gonna go to structural engineer's report, the wall needs to be fixed sooner rather than later, um, and so we are working with the bank to push them to address it as quickly as possible.
So, no, it's funny, 'cause up on the, up on there, in April, was put, raise repair immediately. I haven't seen a damn building get fixed with one of them raised repair immediately yet in the city. Within the thirty days allotted. So, I'm curious, I don't understand why we bother with that sign. There's not one single building's ever been fixed within the thirty days that it stays. Now, this is April, I can do a right to know to find out, which, pretty much, I'm sure everybody there has been doing a fantastic job those way. I can do a right to know to find out, but I'd venture to say that that structural issue is probably the reason why we shut down to begin with, and here we are, months later, with it now being an issue with neighbors. Anyway, another thing, is there a way we can just shut down North Prater Street?
Yeah.
Because with Prater Street, if you go on my timeline and take a look at the amount of dumping that happened in the last three weeks along there, it is absolutely unbelievable. Um, also, I'm wondering if we can somehow team up with Norfolk Southern, because once the garbage gets past a certain point, it's theirs, and we can't touch it. And we're building on the riverfront, and I heard, actually, somebody posted that they were on a boat, on the river, coming through there, and they could see all the garbage that's on Norfolk Southern's property. You know, it goes down the hill, unfortunately, they're at the bottom, gravity, you know, is it, you know. So, I'm just wondering if we can reach out to Norfolk Southern and see if we can do something about that. Um, this, for the sixtieth time this year, and the eighth time in two weeks, we had to call in seven twenty-six North Penn for dumping. This property has become an absolute magnet for dumping all the time, and according to several neighbors, um, I'll put it out there, I don't care, seven twenty-four is the major, major contributor of this. Now, they put household garbage out there, so maybe, instead of our guys picking up the garbage, maybe somebody has to put their gloves on and start weeding through the garbage to see that it does belong to them. There's numbers, down my mind, it belongs to them, because seven twenty-four, honestly, I don't even know how that building's open, because it's next to a building that's roofed and collapsing, and I'd venture, it's disgusting, typically disgusting way, I'll put it out there. Another thing, it's quite obvious of the owners, landlords, and honestly, the tenants of the four hundred block of Tillman, four hundred block of James, four hundred block of Green, four hundred block of Washington, the seven hundred block of Moore, and the seven hundred block of Penn, none of them care, with the exception of like five people we found that actually are fighting and fighting and fighting to clean their neighborhood up. And I am imploring it anyway, we can get code enforcement to maybe send an agent up there and go house to house and do an inspection of every single one of these people. I guarantee you, you will find an immense amount of violations along Tillman, along Moore, and along Penn, because these places are, the recess pulls out back, we got garbage piled, hating up against the wall of the, of the, uh, former Allen Theater. It is so disgusting through there, it is unbelievable. And these people wanna live like that? You know, you like to represent tenants, but you don't like the hell out of them, seriously. This neighborhood is awful. This particular section is completely disgusting, you will see it whenever we have our walk, but it is so, it bothers my mind how people could live in filth and crap. We've done cleanup, at the cleanup, we've tried to go through there, and you can't get these people to come onboard, so if they don't wanna come onboard, I could care less if you can dent every damn home there and put it all out, because honestly, this, this section is a drastic change, and quickly, and trust me, the tour that we will have for you, you're just, you're gonna be very disgusted.
Oh, no.
I mean, I got out of the car today, I wish I didn't. Walking there was even worse, I mean, and then I got people getting mad at me, 'cause they're taking pictures of garbage and calling it in. "What were you doing, man, bringing people in on us?" Yeah, "You wanna live like pigs?" Yeah, I'm gonna bring everybody on, we'll, we'll walk.
Would you, you know that, because, because.
Bye, Jim.
Uh, Mr. Gureydi, go ahead.
Um, I'm not sure if we, uh, have the, uh, appropriate members from the city, uh, in the, we, we reached out to them and, um, I think, well, like, the Department of Climate and Development, probably, uh, uh, probably works, it's only a couple of.
She might not notice this is not a mayor walk, because she would refuse to go there. She knows, I asked council, and council said that they would do a walk, so.
Any, any people, if appropriate.
Ms. Coria asks Mr. Broadhead to go, but we haven't set on the date yet, but it looks like the twentieth, I think, or fifteenth.
Right.
It might be higher.
Yeah, we're trying, I even make sure that we have the right people, we do the walk, 'cause if we walk, and then, nobody's there, then, then, useless work.
Right, you got it.
Okay, um, Mr. Hutton, well, good evening, eight forty-four South Eleventh Street, I wanna present the Allentown Patriots tonight. Uh, I wanna talk about the, uh, the lights in the Parkway Christmas barn, and, uh, that's been in jeopardy as far as coming up the speed, or who's gonna get the contract for the last two months. Back in July, we approached, you know, the Parks and Recreation Director, on trying to get this resolved, so that the Patriots or anybody else was gonna get this, that we would know about it. We can't keep pushing this down the road, you know, day after day and not know. So, this afternoon, I received a call from Rodney, uh, slow out of here, and he wants to make a speech to the, to the council tonight. He's one of our vendors, been there over eighteen years, as long as we've been there, and, uh, maybe we can get this thing going, get a decision made.
What, what, what did Ms. Taylor say to you?
She says she would have an answer by Labor Day.
And, and, give me the question, the question is, who's going to?
We had a verbal, our, our president of the Patriots, Robert Cupp, had a verbal presentation, or through a telephone call, said the Patriots could run the Christmas barn this year.
Right.
I requested a written email or something in writing.
Right, okay, and you haven't gotten, so, a finalization?
With our ongoing continuation with the city between the Allentown Patriots, I only thought it was proper that we had something in writing, just an email.
Okay.
Now, what we're trying to do is get something going, so our vendors can, we can proceed.
Okay.
I mean, what's going on?
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hutton. Name and address for the record?
Yeah, Bron Flot, W 88 East Toppelo Road, Center Valley, Pennsylvania. I was born, raised here in Allentown, been, uh, very active in the community. I just wanna bring to attention exactly what he had said here, that we've been there for over eighteen years, participating in the craft barn. As you may or may not be aware, the craft barn is visited by approximately fifteen thousand to twenty thousand adults and children each year, with many families returning each year after year to get their child's picture with Santa, or have a chance to get out of the corner and take a break before they take their long drive back home. It provides a great environment to cap off a family's evening after seeing the Parkway lights, and it's become a part of the Lights in the Parkway experience for many visitors. It also provides the Patriots with a key piece of funding needed to provide the service that they provide to the community. Excited just to reiterate what he said, it's my understanding that circa a week ago, the city provided the Patriots with a verbal commitment to allow them to manage a gift barn at this, which resides in the Parkway. However, the only thing needed to move forward, with booking the crafters and making those final, final financial commitments, is to sign a contract with the city. It's my understanding that a priori's contract is provided to the city to expedite the contract, final signing, and a commitment was made to get closure by Labor Day. The reason we as crafters and supporters need closure is because crafters need time to make a commitment on the calendar, as well as the time to make the crafted items in the quantity needed to support this high traffic volume. The later the Patriots pay, find, or sign this final contract, uh, gives less time for the crafts to prepare, and they're gonna have less participation, because it's getting too late for them to commit and block that time out and be able to provide the, uh, the craft at the level needed to support it. So, the longer we wait, the less likely they might be able to get the support they have to, to fill the barn. I believe it would be very disappointing if visitors and families would lose a gift barn as part of their lights in the Parkway experience, especially if we're talking about simply signing off an agreement that has been verbally approved and is consistent with the contract that has been signed off in the past. I hope you do whatever you can to support, you know, the Patriots to get this final last step done, to sign off on it, get the contract. We as, we as, uh, vendors, we sign contracts with them, because it's, it's in their best interest, we commit certain, certain things, it's written down, they consistently have a contract with the city, it just makes sense for them to have that final dotted line, just protect themselves, as well as protect us, 'cause we put a big investment in. As craftsmen, we have to put our money to buy the supply and the bond we do, and if we don't start doing this now, we don't have to kind of prepare to be able to do a, a good presentation to the community. And, you know, I've, I've been there for eighteen years, and I get a lot of solid feedback from, from people that attended the gift barn. They say we provide, you know, a, a secure environment, they enjoy it, we provide very little, low expense items, that they can walk out of there, and with ten or twenty dollars, it feels as if they have, you know, a good experience, they can get something for kids, they have popcorn, they have, they have, uh, juice, it's a good break for those people that travel for an hour or two to get to the city and go to the lights, it's part of the tradition, actually stop at the gift barn, take a break, let the kids get out, stretch your legs before they drive home. And if for whatever reason, we do not provide the environment for them to be able to provide the service, it's gonna actually, you know, be less of an experience for those that are attending Lights in the Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and Ms. Coria, you'll pass it on to Ms. Taylor, but I think it's more important that we also pass it on to the mayor. We need, we need a yes or an no, and, uh.
Right, there's just one more thing, and, and basically, the agreement is already in writing, it's just a matter of updating, it's not a case where you're gonna have to regenerate hours of sitting there and re-typing the agreement, it was something that we'd done in, in thirteen and fourteen. We started, uh, actually written agreement with the city, where we would provide what they would provide, so basically, it's not starting from day one as far as writing an agreement, this is, it just changes from dates, I can do myself in five minutes, so, I mean, it's just a matter of getting the number one guy right now, right now, to do this, okay?
Understood, and it has to be, because, I know, September becomes October, and October becomes Lights in the Parkway.
It gets to a point where you have to make the code open.
Yep, you're right, I mean, vendors have to know what they're, what they're moving forward with, uh, mhm. Yeah, Mr. Ray, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Glaser. Twenty-eight seventy-six, Alastair, Pennsylvania. It totally occurred for me. I just wanna make a comment, and I wanna really thank the three existing council people here that signed that LCA water bill. I wish you could come and look at my water rates. It's totally unbelievable what's happened. I don't know if you people are aware of what was gonna happen after a couple of years, but my water rates have just grown sky-high, and, uh, I think it's absurd that we're paying more here in the city than the people in the suburbs are paying for this water we're supplying, basically. Uh, and my other comment is, Cedar Beach, okay, we spent between two and three million dollars, I think, for this new pool. Uh, I was told, I was.
About one point eight.
Two million dollars.
You wound it off.
Yeah, I was told last week by a contractor that it's not the contractor there that's screwing it up, there's something with the engineering or whatever there that is really lacking, okay? And I wanna know who has control of this project, and who's watching this project? The guy that told me last week, who's a reputable person here in the town, and he said he'll be lucky if that pool's open till next summer.
And that will then be open by next summer?
Yeah, he said that.
No, 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 don't, no, don't, 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 I mean, I said it before.
You said it before.
No, I said, no, I'm not mad at you, but you don't have your facts straight, you don't have your facts straight. I said, if you were here, and if your memory is as good as mine, if you were here that night, I said to Ms. Taylor, July third, they could vouch for not vouch for me, I said, July third will become August third, will become September third, and Cedar Beach Pool will not be open. I was right, so, go ahead.
Okay, so, is there any penalties gonna be incurred on the contractor?
No, I already asked that, we had a meeting.
Who's protecting the taxpayers here, the money we're spending down there?
I, I, I don't disagree with you, it's a shame, it's a quality of life issue, it's a shame that the kids in Allentown don't have a pool to vouch for, but it all started with the engineering stuff, it all started with permits, okay, it was, it's a total debacle, it's, it's, it's.
I can see who's embarrassing, I can see who's protecting the taxpayer, there was nobody even here tonight, from the city.
She's representing administration.
Yes, representing administration, right. My other thing is, there was a project done in back of Stooges, a water, uh, replacement back there. Person that worked on the job told me that could have been done in half the time with a private contractor, again, a very reputable contractor. I mean, who's protecting us?
We, we, there was.
The city, the city did the project, they were there a whole summer.
The city didn't do the entire project.
They did most of the project.
They did most of the project, but we did have a private contractor.
Yes.
Okay, to do that project, that was a very big project.
But they said it could have been done in half the time it would have been subbed out.
Yeah, facts.
And.
Opinions.
Okay, well, I'm telling you a fact, Ray.
You know.
I'm telling you a fact.
Well, it's like whisper down the alley, you know.
It's not whisper down the alley, Ray.
It's a fact, give us a name.
I'm not gonna give you a name now.
Yeah, it could have been done in half the time and half the cost, did I hear, or just half the time?
No, it could have been done in half the time and it was subbed out.
Major project, it was, yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay.
It's done.
My other question is, and I guess I can direct, I've asked you for help with, uh, the city with these trucks that are selling food.
And I haven't answered, but I haven't answered for you, I haven't seen you in about six weeks, I haven't answered for you.
But anyhow, we have two trucks, we have two trucks on Tillman Street that are selling stuff, we had a hot dog vendor in back of Auto Zone, now, he was asked to leave last week by the owner of Creative Tile, he said, "Get the heck out of here."
They were selling hot dogs in the corner.
Yeah, I mean, what's protecting, Ray, what's, who's protecting the people that have invested their lives here in the city with putting restaurants?
That was asked last, that's, that was asked last week, uh, at C E D C, I believe, and, uh, the, and, and I totally agree with you, we should not have a, a food truck in front of your restaurant where you put a lot of money into your restaurant, like, "Till I finish," a lot of money into your restaurant, and they're gonna sell stuff for, you know, that cost, and I was told, and I don't like to, it's something, they only have to be, imagine this, they only have to be a hundred feet away from your restaurant, am I correct?
Well, why not have, why not have the dump unit to change the ordinance?
We need to look at it, and I've said, we will look at it.
I wanna protect the people that have invested money here in this community, and it doesn't look good, Ray, when you see all these food trucks.
I, I totally agree, and a hundred feet is only thirty yards, so, you know, and it could be like, and, and, I don't know if you wanna address that, but Vicki Crystal was here, they have to go through the licensing and the permits, the whole bit, but, and I, 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 and I talked to Mr. Hammond, we do need to look at that, that's, and, and you know, the.
How long is it gonna take?
The city government, you know?
That's the problem. I'd bring my city government, Ray, I'd be bankrupt.
I, I.
Sure I would.
Okay, all right, he's still a type.
It's not even counting.
That's, that's all right, no, but, uh, Mr. Hammond, we did make a note, we did say we were gonna look at that, on an order in students, you're right, they can, and there's gonna be more and more food trucks and vendors popping up, and.
Well, there's gonna be more.
Yeah.
And my other question is, have we exhausted all legal means to get fat head out of our city?
No comment, and you do, your time has, your time has expired. No comment, your time has expired.
I'm lagging your finger either.
Thank you, Mr. Ray, good, good to see you. Um, make sure that clock starts, I think you have about eight minutes. Mr. Trotter, welcome.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, I'll be very brief.
No, that's okay.
Robert Trotter, nineteen twenty Whitehall Street, Allentown. Um, as far as, uh, as I just said, I think there are ways we can, we can get, we can force Ed Klosky out of office and alter pursuing that, that's, that's what I'm gonna try to do. I wanted to say something about Ken Heffentraeger, uh, the comments that he made, and maybe I'm speaking out of naivety, but it occurred to me, I don't understand why the, why Ken has to bring these things to the administration's attention, I don't know why they don't find these things on their own. We have blighted properties, we have dumping, I think there's a, there's a, there's a statute that says, if there's, if there's garbage on somebody's property, they're responsible for it. I know in the past, people maintained their own properties, they didn't have to be told. Um, but I'm wondering why, is there a reason why the administration can't, can't find, I mean, Ken Heffentraeger drives all around the city taking pictures, isn't that the job of the city? I'm just asking.
We, we have, we have people out there, uh, going around with, uh, I mean, Ms. Coria could, uh, help, help answer this, uh, with sweep tickets, we have people driving around looking, and.
Right. We do inspectors actively looking for blighted property issues and trash and highway issues, uh, but we also rely on complaints that come into our office to make sure we're targeting the properties that, um, really need us to, um, to be sending violation notices and to be following up on.
But shouldn't you be taking a more active role in that, I think you do it already, you don't think you should be taking a more active role?
We do take an active role, but we do appreciate people who, when they see a problem property out in the community that they reported to us, and, um, and Ken does that, well, here at city council, but, but also comes directly to us, and we appreciate that.
But you don't think you do what you do at this point, that what you're doing?
There's quite a few problem properties out there, and so I think, um, it, it makes sense to have the community file complaints, but we also have, um, a large number of inspectors on the street all day, every day, looking for problems.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, welcome to the inspector.
Van, can you comment?
Yes, Ms. Van for the night, please.
Uh, I, I am on the, um, board of, uh, blighted property, and it's amazing what hoops we have to go through to get applied it, once we do, then we have to court, and then it takes, it takes forever, but Ken came up with a, a statement that is so true, it's not only the landlords, it's also the tenants, you know, and we have just so many inspectors, we can't afford all the inspectors that we need to keep this city clean. It's up to the residents, we didn't have this problem maybe twenty-five, thirty, forty years ago, but the city is doing, believe me, as much as they possibly can do, and I know Ken works very hard with this, we're gonna go walk around this, this city, we're gonna have a walk on the tenth ward, but if the people don't start taking care of their, am I done? If the tenants don't start taking care of their properties, along with the landlords, and I know for a fact I'm a landlord, and every time I would fix my building up, and someone come to wreck it, and someone come to wreck it and fix it up, it gets to the point where landlords don't care anymore. So, Ken brought up a good point. It's the tenants and landlords, and I can't apologize for the city, but understand how hard it is. And, um, when you're involved in it, it's as frustrating, probably the more frustrating it is for you guys. That's all I have.
You know, and, and Ms. Haffa's up to it, and the numbers, the numbers are overwhelming. They're just overwhelming with twelve inspectors, and it's not an excuse, but the numbers are just overwhelming. But, I'm, thank you.
I think too, the problem is, they don't really have to go out looking for these. The calls just themselves coming in. It is overwhelming. We have an unbelievable amount of irresponsible people in this city. Just driving in tonight, I saw dumping on the side. I drove along Southern Avenue almost on a daily basis, and TVs and stuff. This is just ongoing, there's no end to it. And as Mr. Heffentrager spoke about Bradford Street, we were over there, uh, six months ago, and it just, it's ongoing. We have an extremely large number of irresponsible people, and it's unfortunate, but there's no way our inspectors can be going out there and looking. They have enough to do just trying to, uh, take care of what has been reported and what they do know about.
I guess my question is, do, can you imagine that there could possibly be a system that could keep, that could keep better track of this event? Because it's really a, you know, people are coming to the city and they're seeing all this stuff. Is it, can you imagine a system that might be better able to handle this? Can you imagine how soon this could be jungled?
Well, people have to more or less control a lot of this on their own, neighbors, and that's the problem. Like Ken said, five people in, what did you mention, a four-block area that show some concern? You know, and I hate to say it, but back in the day, people took care of their neighborhoods. You know, they out washing their porches off. They pick up their neighbor's garbage that was thrown on the street. It's unbelievable, the amount of trash I see on streets, driving through cities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else courtesy of the floor? See, now we will close courtesy of the floor for the evening. Uh, for a little minutes, by common consent?
Yes.
So move. Okay, old business, no old business. We'll move right on to the quick part of the evening, communications. Uh, we have two proclamations this evening. Uh, proclamation number one, Eric Kratz. Kratz, I'm sorry, I apologize, Kratz. Come on up, sir. Operations Manager for EMS will accept a proclamation for the City of Allentown EMS, which is a recipient of the two thousand fifteen American Heart Association's mission, Lifeline EMS Gold Award for Treatment and Care of Patients Suffering Severe Heart Attacks. And Mr. McLean will read the proclamation in its entirety.
Mr. Kratz, I've known you for a long time. I hate to give you a proclamation after making you sit through courtesy of the floor, but that's the way it works. All right, here is the proclamation. Whereas the City of Allentown EMS is a recipient of the two thousand fifteen American Heart Association's mission, Lifeline EMS Gold Award for Treatment and Care of Patients Suffering Severe Heart Attacks, and whereas the City of Allentown EMS has been recognized for their efforts in improving system of care and outcomes for ST elevation myocardial infarction patients, and whereas Allentown EMS responds to some fourteen thousand calls for service per year, and whereas emergency medical system providers are vital to the success of Mission Lifeline, and one more, whereas EMS agencies perform twelve lead ECGs, which measures the electrical activity of the heart. Now therefore, Allentown City Council does hereby congratulate the City of Allentown EMS on Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, for their efforts in improving system of care and outcomes for people experiencing ST elevation myocardial infarction. Signed by all members of City Council.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
If I may, just quickly, um, I'm receiving this for EMS. I certainly have probably the least amount to do with this. The paramedics that are out responding to calls, obviously, are the reason that we achieved this. Uh, real briefly, just to give you a little background, there's three criteria that we have to meet for this. The two that are really applicable to us is chest pain patients, non-dramatic, thirty-five and older, getting twelve eighty KG seventy-five percent of the time, and the, um, initial patient contact to the cath lab intervention, less than ninety minutes. So that's from when we arrive at the residence, so they're actually in the cath lab at one of the receiving facilities, um, ninety minutes, and we have to meet those goals in seventy-five percent of the time for the last twenty-four months, uh, to get the Gold Award, so...
Pretty good.
And, uh, one other thing, real brief, uh, Jeffrey Vanger, paramedic, I think many knew him, thirty-five years with the city, recently retired. Um, I think that's probably a mark that we will not see again by a paramedic, um, so I just wanted to recognize Jeffrey for his years of service to the city.
Very appropriate. I know Jeffrey too, I didn't know he retired.
Yeah, he kind of kept it very low-key, but that's, I certainly wanted to recognize him for all those years.
Certainly wish him well.
Thank you. You know, also too, just, I want to add, um, we've talked many times, uh, I've had a few trips in the ambulances with the paramedics over the years, but there's not a more professional group of people than the Allentown City Paramedics. Unbelievable. The, the work ethic and professionalism and the dedication is, is, is so commendable, and it's not, there's not a group of paramedics in the whole state or public nation as conscientious and dedicated as your people. And I, and please pass that down to your people.
I will, sir. Thank you very much for the kind words, and we certainly have a lot of pride in the organization.
You should. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This evening, uh, our next proclamation goes to Detective Sergeant Bill Williams. Will accept the proclamation for his heroism and quick response in saving a life locating at Acetate Island National Seashore. And that's right across the river from, what's the, it's Acetate, and what's the other one?
Chikatik.
Chikatik, yeah. I'm in Chikatik. Um, Bill Williams, Captain, former captain, Hendricks will read the proclamation in its entirety.
But I'm not going to apologize for you sitting through this. I'm sure this is better than the job you do on the street. Whereas Detective Sergeant Bill Williams has been with the Allentown Police Department since April third, two thousand and six. Detectives Bill Williams has received multiple commendation awards for achievement and merit. And on July twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen, while vacationing at the Acetate Island National Seashore, Detective Sergeant Bill Williams noticed a woman screaming nearby, indicating that her husband was non-responsive in the water. And the National Park Service lifeguards and Detective Sergeant Bill Williams pulled the man from the ocean without vital signs and resuscitated him by performing CPR and applying a defibrillator. And with the help of the National Park Service lifeguards, Detective Sergeant Bill Williams, working with others, administering CPR and using a defibrillator, restored his breathing. Now therefore, Allentown City Council does hereby commend Detective Sergeant Bill Williams for his heroism and quick response to save a life, and recognizes the residents of the city are fortunate to have such a dedicated officer serving them. Congratulations.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Um, one may not believe it when looking at some of the press lately, but I'd like to think that I'm just a reflection of what law enforcement is as a whole. We're called to serve, and we answer that call, and that's what I did on that day. I'm very thankful that God put all the right pieces in the right place. One of the things that his wife said to my wife as we were working on him was, "I've been with him for thirty years. What am I going to do without him?" And, uh, I'm very thankful that through all of our collective actions, she will have to answer that question now. He just had a successful double bypass immediately following our actions, um, and it is my hope and prayer that they will have thirty more blessed years to come. Thank you for your recognition.
I have to say something. Yeah, Mr. Gurey, absolutely.
Thank you, Detective Sergeant. I, I, you know, I read the article about what you did, you and your wife did. I remember it was in my house, and I read it, and I said, "What an admirable thing to do." And, uh, I was very proud of you and your wife. I've never met you before. Uh, I asked my fellow council members to support me in sponsoring this proclamation, and they did, and it was very, very well read by our, uh, our chairman of the, uh, Publicity Committee.
Indeed, I would expect no less.
Yes. And I tell you, I, I thought that exactly what you just said, in an environment where there are so many issues and conflicts between police and residents, we just get broken things to do to provide our proclamation to you, and I wish you and the entire department, you're the best that we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your recognition. If I may for just a moment, you know, I have this belief in my faith that my wife is here.
Yeah, I'm ready. How about, I've got the whole family. We want the whole family to stand up.
The whole family, and my parents as well. All of the... Your mind is telling us to that Penn State meeting.
Uh, Mr. McLean.
I was going to have his wife stand up to be recognized. And, and my daughter is at Pitt, so it should be a good sign.
Oh, it's still, it's Saturday.
You know, I do want to share this too. Many times, especially of recent, I've had people come up to me and say, "Aren't you glad you're retired now with all the controversy going on?" And just as you, I tell them, "Not at all. If I wouldn't have had to leave, I wouldn't have. I really enjoyed the job I did." And you obviously enjoy it, and you do it well. Thank you for the good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All this mode, go ahead, absolutely.
I, I want to congratulate you. Um, I think that it's well deserved, you know, thank you for serving. And also, I think that it's, it is truly important to, you know, for everyone to know that it is, it is important to learn CPR. I mean, you were able to save a life. One, and you were really fast, and second of all, you did a great job performing CPR. Because you know what? When you learn how to do CPR and you do it well, things like this happen, you know, you can save a life. So I just hope that more CPR classes will be given, hopefully, uh, in the city for free, and, and I'll be more than happy to, um, you know, be a part of that, um, instructor. And we were doing that last year, and I think that more CPR classes should be given in the city, in, in, in the city for free, because everyone should learn CPR. Thank you for saving, saving lives. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and the people who received the proclamations, and, uh, you please, you don't have to stay, you know, considering the courtesy of the fours, enough education in itself. No, have a, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. Good singing, all of you. All right, now, we will move into reports from committees. Budget and Finance, Mr. Gurey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, I was in the Budget and Finance Committee on August twenty-fourth, that's a day. I, um, was not able to attend, I was on vacation, but, um, the committee, uh, happening. Um, Mr. Hendricks chaired the committee on that day, and there were, um, presentation of, uh, survey that was done. Yeah, Finance Department, yeah, and, uh, yeah, they, they instantly, they presented a survey that they had, uh, put together, uh, yeah, along with, uh, the, uh, Controller, Mr. Glazer. So, um, we thank you for, um, supporting us and, um, chairing that committee while we were, uh, I was out. But there will be a committee meeting, uh, tentatively scheduled for, uh, September twenty-eighth at six o'clock, six-thirty, might be six-thirty, but, uh...
Check with him.
Six o'clock, right here in City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Gurey. Community and Economic Development, uh, Dr. McGuire's not here, I will read that. The committee met on August twenty-third, and forty bills, forty-eight and fifty-one to the full body favorably. The next meeting has not yet been scheduled. Uh, Human Resources Administration appointments, Ms. Haffa.
Uh, we met this evening, and we have nothing scheduled for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Haffa. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Moda.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on August twenty-fourth at five P M., and we have not scheduled, you know, the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Moda. Public Safety, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met tonight, and there's three bills that have been put forth to the full council. Uh, future meeting is scheduled for September fourteenth at five-thirty. At that time, the department budget priorities will be discussed, uh, by our chief, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Uh, Mr. McLean, Public Works.
We have a meeting scheduled for September fourteenth at five-thirty P M., at which time we're going to review the department's budget priorities.
Right. Five-thirty Public Works, six-thirty Public Safety. Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations, Strategy, that's my committee. The committee has not met since the last meeting, a future meeting is not yet been scheduled. Mr. Glazer, welcome. City Council's report, looking forward to it.
Um, I always like to have expectations properly set, so I hope the bar is not, in fact, too high, sir.
It's not, don't worry, sir. Thank you.
Uh, I've got three items I'd like to comment on this evening. Um, the first is bank reconciliation due for March two thousand and sixteen. The date of the report is August twenty-third, I, I believe, that the court forwards these to you. I just want to comment on two of the findings. Uh, the most recent finding was, um, we identified a special pay deposit for thirty-one dollars, which was still outstanding on the central bank reconciliation. Um, we recommended that that deposit should be researched and corrected, and the administration's response was that it was, um, an internal book transfer from payroll to central treasury, and they corrected it, and will address issues like that, uh, timely moving forward. The second finding I'd just like to comment on is, um, untimely bank reconciliations. Most of the bank reconciliations have been months after. Uh, for instance, the one I'm commenting on is in March. We recommend, of course, that reconciliation should be done monthly and in the month of receipt of the bank statement. The administration's response was, it's reached the process of reconciling cash accounts in a timely manner. Um, in my understanding, is some additional personnel have been hired, and we certainly hope that this translates into, um, more timely information to the controller, so we can provide bank reconciliations, uh, to council and the public in a more timely manner as well, and we're hopeful that we'll catch up in due time. I would also like to comment on the audit reports from the, uh, the two interns. It's, um, those of you who were here and saw two very, very good presentations. Uh, one was on daycare permit fees, and the other one was on liquid fuels process flow. Uh, there were a couple of findings in the, um, in the daycare, uh, in the daycare audit. Um, there are a number of forms that have to be filled out, um, and noted that, um, people are not always consistent in the documentation and how they fill those forms out. Um, the administration has committed to, um, both new and seasoned clerical staff will be retrained in proper documentation, and the program manager will perform random monitoring checks. Um, one of the challenges in, in that process is you are balancing between two different, um, information databases, and that can lead to, um, human error and inconsistencies into inputting the information into two different databases. We noted that, uh, the health director will discuss duplication with the I T directors, seek alternatives. So, you, hopefully you'll have that discussion effective, and hopefully there'll be some sort of resolution. Those are the major ones there. As far as liquid fuels goes, um, we noted that there was a lack of a procedures manual. Now, this is a state-funded program, and anything the state or the federal government, you know, paid for, have a myriad of rules and regulations. Um, we, we recommended the streets should consolidate all the notes and produce a formal procedures manual to address the liquid, liquid fuels tax funds. Uh, their response was, at the beginning in two thousand and sixteen, um, they'll put together standard operating procedures manual, um, so that they'll be able to use that going forward in the future. That was the major finding there, finding there. You know, once again, the bank reconciliation and the audits are up on our, my website, uh, you have to request them. Hopefully, at some point in the future, uh, the website will be modernized, and it'll, it'll be a little bit more user-friendly.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Glazer.
You're very welcome, sir.
Any, uh, not too many people left? Here. Pretty easy night there. Uh, appointments, Ms. Haffa, we have one appointment for this evening, I see. E A C. Uh, E A C, Environmental Advisory Council. Marissa Altman.
We have an appointment tonight for the Allentown Environmental Advisory Council. It's Marissa Altman. Are there any, uh, nurse here, to mine?
Uh, no.
Do you have any comments? Any like comments?
Yeah, I mean, uh, she's very, well, I, uh, she's very well qualified. I think she's in like, uh, outdoor education, biology, and all that other good stuff, but, uh, and for the Environmental Advisory Council, she's, um, extremely qualified. And I think she just moved into the area not too long ago, if I remember her resume. Uh, no, a very qualified, good candidate.
Any comments from the public? All right. We have a vote.
Uh, let's, uh, let's, uh, let's do a little vote here, right? Mr. Hanlon, would you do that?
Yep.
Okay, let's go. I don't see anything that I... Oh, yeah, yeah. Hmm, I think I might have hit on... There we go. There we go. There we go. Thank you. Okay, ready to roll, let's hit, uh, the A and A for Marissa Altman, E A C.
It's been about six days and no day.
Thank you very much, and I think she'll be a fine addition to the E A C, a very good, uh, committee. Uh, ordinances, ordinances for final passage, Bill forty-six.
Bill forty-six, amendment to general funds to provide for supplemental appropriation amount of five hundred dollars as a result of a donation from Kitchen Savers and Bath Builders to be used for the police department's costs associated with the national night operation.
Hey, Mr. Hendrix, that was your new committee earlier this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, there was a favorable vote of three to nothing to pass it to the full council. A favorable vote.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from my colleagues? And it comes from public. Mr. Hanlon, we'll vote on Bill 46 at this moment.
President, I have six days and no days.
Thank you very much. Bill 47.
Bill 47 amends the 2016 general fund to provide for supplemental appropriation in an amount of $650 as a result of donation from the Allentown Mountain Dew Lions Club to be used towards the purchase of protective vests for a new police officer in the police department.
Mr. Hendrix, that was your new committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. This likewise was forwarded to the full body with a favorable, with a favorable vote unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues? Seeing none. Comments from the public? Seeing none. Let's vote on Bill 47.
Mr. President, I have six days and no days.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanlon, please make a note that Bill 46 and Bill 47, we'd like to send the sponsors of that donation a thank you note from all council members, all council members. Bill 48.
Bill 48 amends the general fund budget by changing the position of construction co-supervisor to building inspection supervisor, remaining at a 13-end, and changing the position title of codes coordinator to building inspections assistant supervisor, upgrading the position from a 10-end to a 12-end in the Bureau of Building Standards and Safety.
Thank you, sir. Dr. McGuire is not here this evening. My colleagues are mine. I'll speak in his absence. We had a very good conversation that night. It was very justified that this recommendation be go forth. And that was again recommended favorably by the entire CDC committee. Any additions from my colleagues? Seeing none. Any other additions or comments from the public? Seeing none. Mr. Hanlon, Bill 48. We vote.
Mr. President, I have six days and no days.
Thank you, sir. Bill 49, Mr. Hanlon.
Bill 49 amends the general fund to provide for a supplemental appropriation of $249,901 reflecting receipt of a grant from the Department of Justice, body worn camera programs to the police department for the purchase of equipment and training associated with the use of cameras.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hendrix, your committee earlier this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill likewise was voted favorably unanimously to go forward to the full council for a positive vote.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues? Full council? Seeing none. Comments from the public? Seeing none. Mr. Hanlon, Bill 49, rule vote.
Mr. President, I have six days and no days.
Thank you very much. Please note for the public record, Bill 50 has been tabled until September 21st. We will go to Bill 51, Mr. Hanlon.
Bill 51 amends the general fund by adding the position of lead program manager at a 10-end in the Bureau of Building Standards and Safety as a result of the city being awarded the Lead-Based Paint Hazard Control Program granted by HUD and the Pennsylvania Department of Health.
Thank you, sir. And again, that was DDCD. Dr. McGuire in his absence. I will take this one. My colleagues are not mine. We had a very good discussion that evening with Ms. Glory and Ms. Kissler. I think the grant is for $1.4 million. You don't turn it down grant money. And obviously, we need a project manager to expedite and, you know, make sure that grant money is being utilized towards full of substance and efficiency and effectiveness. And it was recommended favorably. Any other comments from my colleagues about Bill 51? Seeing none. Any comments from the public?
I just have a quick question, since I wasn't at the meeting. Is this going to be somebody that's already on the city payroll or are we putting somebody in from outside?
We're going to post a position. People from inside the city as well as outside the city can apply to the position. But it is a new position.
It is a new position.
It's a new position.
How long is it funded for?
It's funded, this grant is a three-year grant. So we, at this point, have to, are able to rehabilitate 45 homes or address the lead issues in 45 homes. If we complete that process in less than three years, the position will expire in potentially less than three years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McLean. Any other comments from my colleagues? Any comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon, we will vote on Bill 51 at this time.
Mr. President, I have six days and no days.
Thank you very much. We will go into resolutions for final passage. Bless you, bless you. Mr. Hanlon, R. 145, 145.
R. 145 is a sewage planning module for Penn Square. It basically says we have sewage capacity for Section 6 of the development located in the 16th Ward of the city. And that's found on the North Line Railroad, Little Lehigh Creek, at the Lehigh River, on the South by East Wyoming Street. And on the East by Constitution Drive, on the West by Moore Street.
Thank you, sir. I had a discussion a little early and some of my colleagues also had a discussion with Mr. Messenger. There is capacity for the sewage module. And at this time, I'll entertain any comments, questions from my colleagues about R. 145. Any comments, questions from the public about R. 145? Appears we have capacity and we obviously approve when we have capacity. Seeing none. Mr. Hanlon, we'll vote on R. 145.
Mr. President, I have six days and no days.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let's go to R. 146.
R. 146. R. 146 is a resolution of the governing board of the city of Allentown that authorizes the powers and directs the proper officers of the governing board to appoint a liaison between it and Berkheimer, the duly-appointed collector of local law taxes for the district for the express purposes of sharing confidential tax information with the district for official purposes. And that will be appointing the Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Hartzell. So Mr. Hartzell would be the liaison with the city and Berkheimer to tax collection agencies, is that correct? Okay. All right, thank you. Comments from my colleagues? No money involved in this one, obviously. Okay. Comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? R. 146. Mr. Hanlon, we will pass the vote now.
President, I have six days and no days.
Thank you, sir. Ordinances for introduction. Mr. Hanlon, Bill 52.
Bill 52 amends Article 307 Solicitors and Canvassers by changing the license fee to an application fee, raising the fee from $25 to $50 to recoup the cost of processing the application, changing the time from going door to door from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m. to 7:00, to 7:00 p.m. and separating solicitors from canvassers.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues about Bill 52? Comments from the public about Bill 52? Ms. Haffa, we will sign that to Human Resources Administration appointments. Bill 53.
Bill 53 amends Article 951 Park Regulation, Section 08 Vehicles, by deleting the provision that allows biking and trekking to the park only on the days with the letter T in them, in effect allowing biking and trekking to the park every day.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues about, we had a discussion with Ms. Mona a week or so ago. Any comments from my colleagues about Bill 53? Any comments from the public about Bill 53? Seeing none. Ms. Mona, we're just going to your committee.
Thank you, Mr. Gurey.
Discussion time is over. It's now rubber meets the road now. Yea or nay? Okay. Bill 54.
Bill 54 amends the general fund budget to provide for supplemental appropriation of $10,000 as a result of funding from the Lehigh Valley Health Network to provide for cardiopulmonary resuscitation materials and equipment.
Thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues about Bill 54? No comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public about Bill 54? Okay. We will refer that. Please tell Dr. McGuire, Bill 54 is his, is for me. Bill 55.
Bill 55 amends Ordinance 15293 by correcting an account number and the supplemental appropriation expenditure of $16,250 as a result of grants and expensive enforcement exam commissions to provide for residential outreach and review of applications. Or the HARP board should have been reflected in the general fund and not the federal fund.
Okay, that's just budgetary item. Any comments from my colleagues about Bill 55? Any comments from public about Bill 55? Mr. Hanlon, make a note. Dr. McGuire, for that, the community economic development.
Actually, it's a change of account number. Wouldn't that go to the finance committee?
That's a fair question.
I mean, it comes from, it came from Mr. Kimberly. It came from the...
It came from the HARP.
Yeah.
The guy in charge of HARP.
I mean...
Ultimately, community economic development works with the Department of Finance to figure out the account numbers.
It was discussed at the HARP committee before. I would have treated it as a type vote, but I couldn't get away with this.
It's a finance, I mean, it's a finance error, not necessarily an error with a property.
It's a grant. It's a grant. Ultimately, we work together to determine where best to place the grant funds.
Doesn't matter. You want it?
Ah, doesn't matter. May I just go back?
Dr. McGuire, that's gotta come up.
I would do a better because I'm in the community.
You know, that's, no, we're gonna change it and I'm gonna give it to Budget and Finance. Dr. McGuire is not here, so he doesn't feel slighted. And I want to, I need to help, I need to help my colleague out, Mr. Gurey.
I need at least one, one way of doing it.
Yeah, no, no. So we're gonna go, we'll go Bill 55, Budget and Finance. You're looking for work. What's that? Oh, that's gonna be worth. You know, I gotta go back. Yeah, I'm gonna go back. And I was gonna say it, but I guess that's not like a copycat. I'm gonna go back to Bill 52, okay? I don't know if that should be HR Administration appointments. Somehow, I think that should be CDC. About the fee for $25 to $50 and all, or, you know, maybe I'm wrong.
Here's what, here's what we do.
Give me the rationale.
Here's what we do. So because this came from a certain department, I think it came from the Solicitors Department. So we sent it to a, a basically, the person that has oversight for that.
I'm not, yeah, that would be Ms. Haffa, her department. I don't want to take away from Ms. Haffa, but I thought, you know...
You want to give to William?
Yeah. Remember how we always talk about fees increases, fees increases? We go from 15 to 25. Sometimes that flows to the CDC, but we're gonna keep with Ms. Haffa. That's, you know, you're okay with that, right? It's no big deal.
It could go to finance or the police. It concerns finance and the police too.
Okay. Well, we're gonna stick with Ms. Haffa. Okay, so Bill 55, we're gonna go to Budget and Finance to set up community and economic development. And let's go over to our last page. And we are at resolution for introduction.
Resolution for introduction is R. 47, and that's just to request that the mayor submit the five-year plan to council.
We have a resolution drafted. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is it.
Okay. And then, Mr. Gurey?
Yep.
Comments from my colleagues about the five-year plan? We've been hearing that for a long time. And I think it's time we see that five-year plan. Any comments from my colleagues on R. 147? Seeing none. Any comments from my, the public on R. 147? Mr. Gurey, Budget and Finance.
No, we're, thank you.
No, thank you for saying that, Gurey. Any new business? Seeing none. Anything for good and welfare? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone have a good evening. Shannon, thank you.